This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, November the 18th. Please stand for our invocation led by Patricia Evans, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance.
Let us bow here for a word of prayer. Most gracious and loving Father, we do bless and praise your name, oh God, today. So God, we thank you. Thank you, God, for allowing us to assemble together yet again. So God, we ask that you would bless this meeting, bless all our council members, bless our new mayor of this great city. And God, we just ask that this be a productive meeting, oh God. And we pray, oh heavenly Father, for our communities, for peace, Lord God, for our police department and our firefighters, God. We just ask for protection all around them. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen? Amen, praise God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory, Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Ingram.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our November 18th, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, please at this time put on the off of the vibrating position, the off of the vibrating position. Interpersonate desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing this council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonate designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper notice to the city clerk office would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing this council, there be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who has recognized any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of November 12th.
So move.
Second. Properly moving, second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Minutes approved.
Communications, so Mayor Chair Agadas.
Let's see, there we go. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I want to start today by thanking our council for their thoughtful consideration of two appointments that are being made today. Public safety must always be a top priority for any government. It is certainly a top priority for me and my administration. And today, we're appointing two critical positions in that area. Mr. Curtis Graves is a seasoned public safety professional with 32 years of experience. He has a deep background in investigations, crisis intervention, community engagement, and data-driven crime reduction. He is the right person to lead our Public Safety Department, and I am thankful for his willingness to take on this role. Chief Barry Glisten is here. He's a veteran and a longtime employee of the Mobile Fire and Rescue Department. He has three decades of fire EMS and emergency management experience and a strong reputation within the MFRD, something that I saw in speaking throughout the campaign and since taking this office, highly regarded by all the men and women of the Fire and Rescue Department. I know that he will maintain MFRD's very high standards. And I am thankful for these exceptional leaders, these two great men. And I must tell you, I am excited to get to work with them. I'm honored to work alongside them. And so I'm thankful that our council is ready to accept these two appointments. This time tomorrow, the St. Joseph Street will be converted to two-way traffic. We're doing that in downtown, taking down traffic signals, making one ways, two ways. It's all a part of our downtown street optimization plan. The roadway will be restriped overnight, so hopefully it won't cause much disruption. But I do want to put that on your radar. There will be marked on-street parking available on both sides of the road there on St. Joseph Street. One of the fun things I get to do is recognize the good things that happen within the Mobile mayor's office. And we have a great team, a great staff. I'm but one man, and I certainly could not do the job of mayor without the fantastic staff that surrounds me. And I want to recognize some of that staff today, specifically our creative content manager, Deambro Chapman. Where is Deambro? Is he hiding? There he is, way up in the back. He is very much responsible for making this city and my office look good. And he's done something great. So I want to honor him and the whole team who worked on the You Still Have a Choice short film. Has anybody seen the You Still Have a Choice film? It's fantastic. If you haven't seen it, be sure to get out there and check it out. I'm sure you can find it. Where else can we find it, Deambro? Yep, YouTube. We need to make sure we put a link out to that tonight. But the short film was released by the city earlier this year and just recently received an Audience Choice Award at the Fairhope Film Festival over the weekend. This is the award, pretty neat. Glad that you are being recognized, not just by the folks inside the office, but the larger area and the people out in the community who recognize people that do great things in the creation of film and other things. A well-deserved award, and I'm proud of you. I'm proud of the whole team, and I just want to offer you congratulations. I'm proud of the impact that this film is already having, being shown in our local schools. We are getting rave reviews and a lot of engagement from students on this film. So if you haven't checked it out, check it out, please. Please do. Jim, you want to add any comments?
Yeah, I wanted to comment just in applaud Deambro for the incredible work he did on that film. You know, we, being a career law enforcement guy, understood that we have to be tough on crime, but we've got to be tougher on the conditions that cause criminal behavior. And this intervention and prevention program that he has come up with is already in the school system. It's already engaging students. And if you've ever talked to young teenagers, trying to get them to engage with the facilitators is a challenge. But we saw that once they reviewed this film, they were more than happy to engage with the facilitators and really talk about their problems. And so hats off to Deambro, incredible work, very quality film. I encourage everybody to watch it.
He's humble, so I don't think he likes all this recognition, but I like giving it to him. Do want to remind everybody, my family will be out there for the lighting of the Christmas tree. It's coming up this Friday. It'll be in Mardi Gras Park. The festivities will start at 6:00 PM with the tree is set to be lit around 6:20. We'll see how the crowd is doing, but please join us. Help welcome the Christmas season to our city. There'll be live music, games, activities, and even I hear a visit from Santa Claus himself. Now, I want to turn it over to our Chiefs, Chief Jackson and Chief Glisten here. They're going to present the Officer and Firefighter of the Month Awards. Chief Jackson, I'll let you start it off.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, Staff, Council, for having us here today. It's not too many months I stand in front of you with one of our detectives, but I do stand with you today with Officer Xavier Lopez. He's a detective in the 4th precinct. He's been here nearly six years, but he spent about the last eight to 10 months as a detective finding his way. Listening to Sergeant last week, who is very particular about who he brings into his investigative unit. Officer Lopez jumped in with both feet, asking a million questions, learning as quick as he could on the fly. And in the month of October, he had an exceptional month. He cleared nearly 62% of the cases that he was assigned, mostly involving commercial burglaries. And he had 17 felonies and seven misdemeanors. And he also recovered about $5,000 worth of stolen property. So for that, he stands with us today as Officer of the Month for October.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present Captain Mark Stewart as the Employee Firefighter of the Month. And to go talk about what he's done in just a particular month would be an understatement. He is literally the multi-tool for the fire department. He's a captain that has 34 years on this department, 24 years as a fire service captain. He is over our hazmat. He works there on sea shift. He also is a paramedic. He works on our rescue trucks. He works on our USAR team. He went on three deployments last year with the team and one deployment this year with the team. So when we ask him to step up and do things, he has been more than willing and been able to provide so much to the city and to the department. And just, it makes a wonderful breath to know that we can ask him to help the citizens of Mobile and our department, and he steps up. So today, we recognize Captain Mark Stewart as our Employee of the Month.
Congratulations to both of you all.
And that concludes my remarks.
Counsel, we are privileged this morning to have two Miss Alumnis 2025 in the ordinance with us this morning. We have Ms. Sharon Elaine Harris, representing Mobile County Training High School alumni, Africa Towne de Wipits. And we also have Ms. Mary Jo Jones Lucy, Ms. Central High School alumni, Monty Wildhouse. Welcome to our meeting this morning. Madam Clerk?
At this time, Joyce Reed with the Colts of Valor.
Is there anybody here from the Colts of Valor? All right, we can go on.
Adoption of the agenda?
So move.
Properly moving, second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave the noise ordinance on February 15th on St. Anthony Street and February 17th on St. Anthony Street, November 22nd at Langen Park.
So move.
Second, properly moving, second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 1255 Brussels Street, 655 Halkum Avenue, and 1314 Pecan Street. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
This open up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Today is a public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 505 Chin Street, 559 Hickory Street, 553 Live Oak Street, 753 Dr. Thomas Avenue, 714 Dr. Thomas Avenue, and 757 Dr. Thomas Avenue.
This open up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? So you may come down to the podium by stating your name.
Valerie Brown for 559 Hickory Street.
Okay.
So, once I received the notice, it was already almost time for court. So I really couldn't do anything, to be honest. It just kind of put me in a tight spot. The property got demolished, and then now I'm stuck with the bill. And I really don't even know what to do at this point.
You say that you did not receive any type of notice there?
Once I received the notice, it was already like a week prior to coming to the hearing. I didn't have time to prepare for counsel or even go down and even assess the property properly. I do know that it needed the grass cut, but the property was sound. It was structurally sound. It was boarded up in the same way in which I purchased it from the state. There are other houses along Hickory Street. They're in fairly the same condition, if not worse. So it's not that I didn't have, you know, intention to actually work on the property. It was just I was going to school for real estate, and I didn't kind of have the time in trying to go to class and then show up for those houses too. So, I mean, it did put me in a tight spot, but I just didn't know what to do. And once I received the notice for today, I was like, well, there's no way that I can miss it.
Councilwoman Ingram, would you like to hold this over for a week and let her talk to Mr. David Doc... I'm sorry, David Doc about throughout the meeting. We can discuss this for a week. All right, you see the gentleman that's back there in the rear? If you can just talk to him, and we're just going to hold this over, but we can see what we can go from here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is it you?
Good morning, Counsel. I am Sandra Bryant Mosley. I own the property at 505 Chin. On October 15th, a letter was mailed to me that the demolition of the property on Chin, and I was being fined for it. I would like the council to know that I personally was given time to have the house demolished. And I did. I paid for it by people who done it unassociated with the city of Mobile. So, why I received a letter with demolition in bold print that I owed the city of Mobile when they did not demolish that property? What the city did was send a crew out, and they removed the debris. And they really did a good job. But I need to clarify that the city did not demolish my structure. I paid for that myself. What I need is additional time to pay the fee that I have been fined for what did take place with them coming out, removing debris. I had no intentions of repairing that structure. There were only two standing houses. It dead ends to a red road track and is used for a dumping ground. Everything that I put into that house, financially speaking, was stolen. All of the piping under the house, type of piping inside. Money I spent on appliances for repairs, all of that was stolen. So, I didn't care about paying to have it demolished. I just want to clarify that the city didn't do that. I did it.
But you saying that the city had came back and cleaned up the property?
Yes. Yes, sir. President Small, the city did come out because I had ran out of money, paying to have what I was instructed to do, that I did do. But the city did come out. They removed all of the debris from the house that was torn down. And the city did a good job.
Okay.
But I just want to clarify, the word demolition was not what they did.
Yes, ma'am.
And that being said, I just need additional time to pay that.
Just ask for time, Kirk. This right here just fits in the cost. If you can talk to that gentleman right up the stairs right there, he can tell you exactly how much time the city would allow you to go ahead and pay for it and everything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on these particular said items?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Small. I'll be brief regarding this. Can someone specify...
Full name.
My apologies, Reggie Hill is my name. Can someone specify if there is a difference in the pricing for the demolition? And for just picking up on the debris? Is that somewhere in code that someone could point me to that we can look at as well?
Mr. Doc, if I just stepped out the door and everything, I'm sure you can go out there and ask him right quick.
Okay, and so the piece that I do want to kind of make clear, because this is actually dealing with both of those properties, this one with the 505 Chin and then with the 559 Hickory. It appears that there is some miscommunication between when these matters are being decided between the city and it's getting to the front doors of the citizens. And so I believe that there needs to be some type of oversight mechanism where we're going in and reviewing these properties. Because as well, the young lady just stated that the structure had soundness to it. So I mean that it maybe didn't even need to be demolished. And then we're again charging the people to be the ones to come back down here and deal with this. And then sometimes they're being charged maybe out of character for what's going on in within the observation. So I'm hoping that we can look within whatever is listed in the ordinance and then specify the pricing if there's something different between the demolition. And then as well, we need to start giving people a greater heads up on what's going on with these properties. And I want to throw this in, it may sound a little bit off topic, but it's really not. With us dealing with the housing crisis where we're at now, we might be able to utilize some of these properties if we catch them before they go to the point where there are nuisances of abatement and we're having to demolish them. And then we can actually put that into approval that can help us with what we're seeing in our neighborhood. So those are some of the things, and I'll talk to Mr. Doc about it. Thank you for the suggestion. Thank you for being on the floor.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on these particular said items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to consider vacation of all rights of way located within Lot 1 of MAA ACDC subdivision.
This open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? Not this public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to consider a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of rights of way located within Lot 1 of MAA ACDC subdivision.
This open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Evan Austin.
This Evan Austin, present. Madam Clerk?
Tanya Christian.
Tanya Christian, present. Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to continue these pertinent conversations pertaining to city business. Now, I signed up as well to address those matters that I was speaking on before, but for whatever reason, that was left off. And so I'm going to do my best to just stick with what's on the agenda. Excuse me, however, our rules say that we record abbreviated minutes. So I believe that if I provided all the materials leading up to this, I'm not sure why I have to be so verbatim, as you would say, to explain what it means if I'm going to continue my remarks on the previous week. But anyway, since the beginning of this new term, it seems that we have lost sight of preventing baseless intent from overruling true and existing grounds for cause. For context, consider freedom of speech. While the U.S. Constitution grants us this right, such an amendment does not permit us to freely yell "fire" in a public setting. In a similar sense, for the past 40 years, we have conducted ourselves and conducted city business in a specific fashion, especially as it relates to agenda items and sponsorship of the same. Now, ignoring scores of years of existing precedent appears to be becoming a trend down here. Is that truly in the best interest of Mobileans? That is a question that we need to ask. Last week, the reported council attorney stated that any reported counselor may sponsor any agenda item. However, this was not the intent of the original statute articulated in our council rules. This was designed for when a city attorney or a mayor sponsored a matter on the agenda, then any counselor would be able to join alongside with a city executive, just as any counselor may co-sponsor an item that comes within another colleague's district. That's the difference. So it doesn't mean that just because a moment becomes opportunistic that we can shift the dynamics of that and then just change it and create our own president. This goes against what was established, which has worked for 40 years. And I think that's something that we need to be careful about because these matters are something that you should be seeing directly in your neighborhoods, and you should have the best interest of that. Just as any time before, when something has went on in a specific area, that person was given autonomy to determine what was going to happen. Now, we know the 180 seconds time doesn't allot it, but I think there was a lot of tension last week, and we need to get to the breadth of what this actually is instead of looking at it again from a personal standpoint. Because this is the business of the city, and these are the parts that actually matter. So just a little insight here on this idea with the committee meeting of the whole. This idea with this committee meeting of the whole, it seems that there are some pressures that are being placed on particular individuals that might be learning the idea of the process. And we cannot allow that to be from the presiding sense because it ultimately hurts everybody. People could attempt to take advantage of that or call these things out. But again, it's not personal. And if it's happening in my neighborhood, I'm going to have to come up and say something about that. And as well, that rule that's in the 261 where it gives that person the right to move actually debate something or put something on agenda. But you can't do that in the sense of depriving another individual. So we'll have to discuss other things later next week because we know the time doesn't allot it. But thank you for being on the floor.
Timothy Hollis.
She's not present.
Ordinance is held over 11/056. Amend Chapter 11, Article 3, Section 11 of the City Code to include subsection titled Alabama Construction Trade Academy Fund Fees.
Move to layover two weeks.
Second. Properly moving, second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm laid off for two weeks.
52/046. Adopt Chapter 52 Real Property Maintenance and Enforcement. Article 8 Vacant Structure Registry for Henry Aaron Luke.
So move.
Second.
Properly moving, second, ending discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I have amendment that I'd like to offer. It is striking Section D in 52201. It also strikes a paragraph in 52203 regarding registration. It also amends some minor language throughout the ordinance. It also modifies the fee schedule from four items down to two items. I'm sorry, from four items down to three items. And all of these amendments have been thoroughly discussed over the course of many weeks. And I have a clean version that's been distributed to everybody, and it is also on record with the clerk's office. So I move to adopt this amendment.
I'll second. Properly moving, second, Mr. Reynolds amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oppose. Amendment fail. Back to the original.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Who voted yes? Who voted no?
I was a yes.
I was a no.
That was no.
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 Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I think this law is not a good law without these amendments in it, and I will not support it today. I think this is an arbitrary step that we're placing on business owners in the Henry Aaron Luke to require them that they, when doing the right thing, have to be aware that this new law is in place and that if their property is ever vacant for more than six months, they need to add themselves to a registry. And I just don't think that's going to happen. I think it's a bad law, the way it's written as offered. I've also talked to several business owners within the Henry Aaron Luke that sort of see it the way that I do, that the amendment that was offered was an innocuous amendment by placing the burden on the government to give notice to these property owners that they already know exist that have vacant buildings. Another thing about this ordinance, and I worry about its effectiveness, is someone could use a property for a very short period of time throughout the course of a year and satisfy this law. Where if somebody could go in there and use it one or two days out of the year to conduct some business or keep a power bill on, and you're not affecting the outcome any more than you would otherwise. So for that reason, I will not support this as offered.
Another discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Woods.
I too carry a lot of the sentiments that Councilmember Reynolds has regarding this. I mean, from the start, I mean, I even said last week, I think that, you know, I will be voting in favor of this. But while I do, I do think there's some things that we're going to have to come explore over the next 24 months. I'm just being honest. While, and then too, understandable that there is no duty to register for the city. I wouldn't call it a duty, but I think there's going to have to be an education program rolled out. You know, I think that you have to work with title companies. You have to work with Realtors to get the message out. So while there is no duty... Um so while there is no duty, I think there's there's gonna have to be some work to get the to get this out and let people let's folks know about it. Um you know, I've come to find um that not everyone watches council meetings and uh so it it is uh they they don't know what's going on uh down here and what what's happening a lot of times. And uh you know, while the news media does cover things, um sometimes, you know, they only have thirty minutes a a night per per news station to, you know, per newscast to get to fit in everything in. So while there is no duty from the city, I'm to register or maintain vacant commercial structures. I mean, I do think there needs to be some some effort given to educating um our downtown community. Um again, I I this isn't, in my opinion, this isn't perfect. I don't um, you know, I I know a way that this can be done, but I don't think that uh I don't think that it's constitutionally correct. So um but you know, with this, um this is at least a good shot of trying to um of trying to take a a method and lay out a a program or or some sort of some sort of uh structure to to getting these buildings identified and I think it's the best that the more we can do. Thank you.
Ms. Ingram.
I would like to offer the amendment presented to Madam Clerk that includes um section five-two dash two oh one D.
A second, uh proportional move in second on Ms. Ingram amendment. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, passed five to one. Okay, uh all in fa- uh another discussion? All in favor?
As amended.
As amended?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, it passed five to one. Madam Clerk.
C I P resolutions held over zero eight fourteen thirty-one. Approved purchase order to game time for new playground equipment for Lavaretta Park. Twenty-one fourteen thirty-two. Authorized contract with Person Services Corp. for Figures Park Community Center Mechanical Improvements. Twenty-one fourteen thirty-three. Authorized contract with Rogers and Willard for Taylor Park Community Center Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh Mr. Penn.
Um this is an opportunity at Figures Community Center to um make sure that we're replacing things that's needed on a mechanical standpoint, as hot water piping, air handling units, conditioning units. So of course, you might not see it on the outside, but there's some things that we are changing and making sure that our youth and our elderly have an opportunity to enjoy the inside as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh thank you, Mr. Penn. Another discussion? And I would like to say that this is a uh big, great day, um not just for the city of Mobile, uh not just for District Three, but the uh O'Dell Baltimore Street uh communities. Um resolution twenty-one dash fourteen thirty-three. We have been working on this for years, um six point, you know, million dollar um improvement uh for Taylor Park. Uh this park has served the community for many, many, many years. Um from basketball to football to um senior programs to children programs to et cetera and um even having a pool. And this here is part of the revitalization for Baltimore Street. You know, our first project on Baltimore Street was to redo uh the whole complete streets. Now we are putting brand-new homes on Bo- on Baltimore Street along with this new community center. Uh this is gonna be a great establishment, just not for the citizens in the O'Dell community and Baltimore Street, but for the citizen throughout the city of Mobile. I'm very, very excited about this project because this is something I have been working on for years along with Parks and Rec. And again, this is a great day for the city of Mobile to help to revitalize the community where many people has been talking about for years how bad it is, but it's it's not as bad what people say it is, is up on the uprise. And I'm very proud to um have this go forward on today. Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over forty eleven fifty-seven. Declare the structure at five oh six Patton Avenue, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to hold over?
No table.
Table, excuse me, table.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Resolutions held over twenty-one fourteen fourteen. Authorized contract with United Methodist Intercity Mission of Mobile for maintenance and operation of Taylor Park Recreation Center.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero one fourteen thirty-four. Authorized agreement for transfer right-of-way from Alabama Department of Transportation to the city for additional lanes on Ziegler Boulevard. Zero one fourteen thirty-five. Authorized memorandum of standing between the U S Department of Justice, United States Marshal Service and the City of Mobile Police Department. Zero eight fourteen thirty-six. Approved purchase order to Ironbow Technologies for Cyber Security Protection Service Package. Twenty-one fourteen thirty-nine. Authorized contract with A A C R C doing business as Arc Animal Clinic and Rehab Center. Twenty-one fourteen forty. Authorized contract with A G Wit L L C to provide professional services for the Office of Resilience. Twenty-one fourteen forty-one. Authorized contract with C four Capital doing business as C four Bills for Professional Consulting Services. Twenty-one fourteen forty-two. Authorized contract with Diversified Maintenance, R W S L L C for janitorial service. Twenty-one fourteen forty-three. Authorized contract with Dorsey and Dorsey Engineering for twenty sixteen C I P resurfacing District Six. Twenty-one fourteen forty-four. Authorized contract with D V M I M S doing business as Tillman's Corner Veterinary Hospital. Twenty-one fourteen forty-six. Authorized contract for licenses licensing and implementation of video management system for security cameras. For twenty-one fourteen forty-seven. Authorized contract with Sawgrass Construction Consulting for twenty twenty-six. C I P resurfacing council districts one, two, three, four, five, and seven. Thirty-one fourteen forty-eight. Authorized mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the Federal Transit Administration for trans- federal transportation assistance. Zero three fourteen fifty. Appoint, oh, I'm sorry, take those separate. Okay.
So moved. Second, proportional move in second, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Woods.
Um I just want to make note that uh twenty-one fourteen forty-three, um like I said earlier in pre-council, this is actually the um the first of the repaving schedule um for the newly annexed areas. Um I know uh I know that um we've done some green lot repaving as page ago, but um this really is important to note that um this is the first one coming across uh across our agenda items. It it'll cover areas around Camerlin, Carrington West, uh Windmill, Cottage Hill Estates, Lamplight or Hill Crest Crossings, the Timbers. Um so there's a there's a lot of of streets and neighborhoods getting repaved here and I I just want to make note that this is our first swipe at getting some of that newly annexed neighborhoods repaved and brought up to speed. Um thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Item twenty-one fourteen forty-seven is a consulting contract for our C I P resurfacing for one of all districts except this, that except District Six. He he must have had such a big contract, he had to do it on his own for resurfacing. I'm proud that he's resurfacing over three million dollars worth of streets in his district. I just want to make everyone aware that District Four is resurfacing three point six million dollars in the C I P allocation. And uh we were able to consolidate some unspent funds from previous years to throw into resurfacing and yeah, we will continue to make resurfacing our top priority for C I P allocations going forward. So congratulations, Councilman Woods. Second place is pretty good.
Mr. President.
Um, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad to see twenty-one fourteen forty-seven as well. We're getting a lot of resurfacing done um in District One and it's just continuing the progress um in District One. Um Councilman Reynolds is doing a great job. I would just like to highlight District One was the only district to receive um funds from the state of Alabama to resurface roads and I believe it's because of the hard work that we're doing in District One. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Ms. uh Ms. Ingram.
Yes, Mr. President, I would also like to add and acknowledge the fact that District Two is receiving the second least amount for resurfacing, yet we have uh the some of the oldest uh infrastructure. So I'm sure that we're going to figure out ways that we can work collaboratively uh to support and target our greatest needs. So thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Fleming, do you have anything?
I don't know that I'm gonna try to compete with that, Mr. President. Being being new at this, I'm glad District Five's getting a little little love thrown its way. So thank you, that is all.
Uh, Councilman Penn, um you might have, you know, some money that's coming from the state, but District Three is on its way also. But just look ahead, we do have six million dollars that we're doing for a whole brand-new uh, you know, uh community center along with, you know, D I P, you know, so you catch up. But anyway, we still got some more streets coming up to uh in District Three that we're gonna also pay. So District Three is a place where things are happening. Don't ever forget that.
Mr. President, may I add something? Uh from from my knowledge, in District Five, there are two neighborhoods that will benefit from some of the C I P resurfacing projects. Um I I believe that's Jackson Heights. There are some sidewalks going into the district that should add to the safety uh for for the neighbors and families. And I believe the Ridge Lawn Ravine Woods area is also part of that project. So uh be patient with us as we get that project done, but it should add some value to the neighborhood. Thank you.
It's a good thing that we have a good argument for a good purpose and causes down here. But any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Thirty-seven fourteen forty-nine. Consider the application of Acadian ambulance service for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate an ambulance service.
Motion to layover eight weeks.
Second.
Proportional move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'd layover for eight weeks.
Mr. President, Madam Clerk, may I say something on that too? Uh I believe the uh the layover is fine. If a certificate of need or anything is reproduced showing uh the necessity, will that can that be provided to the council between it before it hits committee?
State, one more time.
In the event a certificate of need um justifying the services for Acadian is determined before it hits committee, will the council be presented with that information? Has a has certificate of need been determined yet?
Mr. President.
This is my question.
I I believe that there's an application that's made and and then it's our job to determine the need. And then once our determination is made, a certificate would be issued.
Gotcha.
So we're we're just in that exploratory phase and that's the purpose of the committee.
Thank you.
And just for the public uh knowledge and purpose, um we will be calling a public safety uh committee uh discussing this particular item that's in front of us in front of us that we just laid off for eight weeks. Uh Councilwoman Vice President Gregory, she will be announcing that um soon. And uh there have been several questions that had came from the uh council and uh we waiting for some answers to come back. So that's the reason that we laying this particular item over for eight weeks. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Zero three fourteen fifty. Appoint Curtis Graves as Executive Director of Public Safety.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion? Uh first, I'd like to say uh congratulations to uh Commander Graves. Um have known him for years um off Arlington Street, O'Dell Community. Uh since I've been on the council, have worked very well with Commander Graves and I'd like to say congratulations to you, looking forward to working with you and bringing your great ideas to this great city of Mobile. Okay, all right.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
I'd just like to join in with my colleague. Congratulations, Commander Graves. I I have enjoyed working with you. Um and I know we will continue to do great things in the city of Mobile. So congratulations.
Mr. President, I would like to also echo that and thank you for your service and we know that you will definitely move us forward in terms of youth violence and the other challenges that we face. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations.
Congrats.
Zero three fourteen fifty-one. Appoint Barry Glisten as Chief of the Mobile Fire and Rescue Department.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion?
Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Woods. Um want to offer a uh maybe premature congratulations, but um uh chief, I've known you for over, man, decade and a half probably, just in another life, obviously. Um and I definitely enjoyed working with you, hearing from the Fire Department uh on your um uh recommendation appointment. Um uh you you have a great department, uh they look towards you already um for leadership. So I want to wish you the best of luck and please let us know if we can do anything for you here.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
I want to join in with my colleague and congratulations to you, chief. Uh we've been having the opportunity to work these last couple of months and you're at, you've been doing an amazing job using my district. Um just to see the whole Fire Department team work together to pass out on the fire detectors and go out and knock on doors and meet people, that means a lot. So thank you for your service.
Any other discussion? I would like to say congratulations to you, chief. I'm looking forward to working with you more and continue to make sure that you be as responsive as you have been for the past several months. Again, congratulations to you. All all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, chief.
Consent resolutions being introduced forty fourteen fifty-two through sixty fourteen sixty-nine.
Move the ways wave the rules for immediate consideration of of items fourteen fourteen fifty forty fourteen fifty-two through sixty fourteen sixty-nine.
Proportional move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules wave, Madam Clerk.
Forty fourteen fifty-two, fourteen fifty-three, and fourteen fifty-four are declaring structures at twelve fifty-five Brussels Street, six fifty-five Hockum Avenue, and thirteen fourteen Pecan Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Forty fourteen fifty-five. Fix um fourteen fifty-seven, fourteen fifty-nine, fourteen sixty are fixing the cost for demolition of structures at five oh five Chin Street, five fifty-three Live Oak Street, seven fourteen Dr. Thomas Avenue South, and seven fifty-seven Dr. Thomas Avenue South. Sixty fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two are approving award a special bonus to the Officer of the Month and the Firefighter of the Month. Sixty fourteen sixty-three through fourteen sixty-nine are determining appropriations to Bay Area Women Coalition, Women's Coalition, John Ella Floor Magnet High School, Secret Scientists, Mobile Law Enforcement Foundation, Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, and Magnolia Springs Estates Property Owners Association. West serve a public purpose and approving payment.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Forty fourteen fifty-six. Fix the cost for demolition of structure at five fifty-nine Hickory Street.
Move the layover one week.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'd layover for one week.
Forty fourteen fifty-eight. Fix cost for demolition of structure at seven fifty-three Dr. Thomas Avenue.
Layover thirty days.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'd layover for thirty days.
Resolutions being introduced zero eight fourteen seventy through sixty fourteen seventy-three.
Our council rules, this these items will layover for one week.
Call for public hearings forty-one fourteen seventy-four. Call for public hearing to consider the vacation of an alley adjacent to Sixth South Franklin Street, scheduled January sixth, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?[1680.81] Public hearings called.
Announcements.
District One, Councilman Penn.
Um thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to join in with you. Um earlier, you celebrated Miss Alumni of twenty twenty-five. And thank you to Ms. Harris from Mobile County Training High School, um Africa Town, the Wipeds. That's where my grandmother and my my grandfather graduated from. So congratulations to you, to Ms. Mary, uh Joe Jones, Lucy, uh Ms. Central High School Alumni, Mighty Wildcats. Congratulations to you as well. That's where my Aunt Thelma, um and all my aunts graduated in the Tombiville area. So uh congratulations. Um then we have Mrs. Brenda Gable Spencer. Uh she actually graduated from uh, you know, I love Central. I love Mobile County, but I love John Ella Floor, Tombiville La Floor. Uh and so uh she's not here today, but she's sending her love. Um and going into that next week, we'll be having, we'll be celebrating um our high school. Next week with a community parade, a lot of great activities will be taking place. Um and it's probably the largest alumni event, I believe, in the state. So um right in the Tombiville community. Today, I will have my community meeting with the Lynnwood community. It will start at six P M. at the Heron Chandler Auditorium, Mobile Infirmary. Um and we're inviting everyone to come out from Lynnwood to hear uh to hear anything that we're doing in the district and answer questions as well. And then also, I will invite everyone to join November the twenty-second at Surge Entertainment. It's now located in District One. Um you probably heard of Friendsgiving, but now we have Pinsgiving. So Pinsgiving celebration will be November the twenty-six second at four P M. Come out, we're going to have free food. Um and then if you like bowling, we see if you can knock some pins down. See Pinsgiving flows. So um let's have a great time on that day. And then November the twenty-fifth, um this is something that I will be doing once a month. I'm bringing young professionals together to talk about ways that we can move our community and city forward. Um it's called Les Bake. Um it'll be November the twenty-fifth at Great Day Latte. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District Five, Councilman Fleming.
Uh yes, this morning I had the privilege of joining fellow council members at the fifty-eighth annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast and um hosted by our Mayor, Spirit Charity Goddess. It was a pleasure uh to get together with business leaders and fellowship and worship. Um the speaker was former Mayor Stimson and it was a treat and a trip to hear his testimony. And uh it was a great way to start the day. I just wanted to share that and hope everybody has a good day.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Oh, no.
District Two, Councilwoman Ingram.
Again, I want to say congratulations to Executive Director Graves and also to Chief Glisten. Thank you for your services and leadership that you'll provide in moving us forward. I do want to announce um asking you all to please join us for our community dinner. We're first starting um by celebrating Thanksgiving uh with our neighbors on Saturday, November the twenty-second at one P M. nineteen oh seven Saint Stevens Road. Again, we're asking all community members, uh neighbors and others to come out and celebrate with us. A second celebration we'll be having is with the campground bottom area and that's Thanksgiving dinner. And we'll be celebrating November the twenty-fifth from twelve to two P M. And that's two sixty-four North Anne Street. And you can find this uh both of these announcements on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ingram. District Six, Councilman Woods.
Um thank you, Mr. President. Uh just a reminder that uh hopefully in the next month, we announcing a a community meeting for District Six uh in the first part of the year. So um look for that uh here shortly. Um do need to uh also remind folks, we've been asked to remind folks that uh on Friday, December twelfth, um from five P M. to eight P M. at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, um there will be a Christmas dance sponsored by the Connie Hudson uh uh found a Connie Hudson uh Senior Center Foundation. Um so I just wanted to stick that out there um as a reminder and I'll I'll stick that in my newsletter uh this week. And then I did want to remind Councilmember Reynolds that even though I may be second when it coming towards putting money towards repaving um for district-wide, uh we put sidewalks in too.
Uh thank you, Councilman Woods. And greetings to the citizens of District Three. Three weeks from tonight, uh we will have our Christmas celebration, holiday celebration at Pillins Middle School. Inviting all the residents of District Three to please come out at six o'clock P M. P M. at Pillins Middle School. Uh we will have plenty of food, fun, and entertainment. And we also ask, which is not required to bring a non-perishable item for um for some elderly that's in the nursing home that do not have any one for on for the Christmas holidays. Again, this event will take place three weeks from tonight on December the ninth, two thousand and twenty-five at Pillins Middle School at six o'clock P M. Also, on December the thirteenth, which is that Saturday at two o'clock P M., is our annual um parades of three, which is sponsored by Representative Barbara Drummond, Alan Clark, and myself. It will start at B.C. Rain High School and will end at Pillins Middle School. Again, that will take place on December the thirteenth at two o'clock P M. Uh not only inviting the residents of District Three, but the uh residents of the city of Mobile. Anything from the administration?
Uh nothing other than to continue to extend those congratulations. Uh excited to work with Public Safety Director Graves and Fire Chief Barry Glisten. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you for, I see some family here with them. A big day and uh glad to be a part of it, excited to work with y'all. Thank you, council.
Motion to adjourn.
Proportional moving second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um just want to remind, November nineteenth, uh myself and the rest of my colleagues and uh the mayor is working with a lot of nonprofits throughout the city of Mobile. Uh we'll be at Last Stadium uh with the opportunity to give food back to our community. So um Martin, you should see that flyer going forth on social media. But just want to remind everyone about November the nineteenth, um that it's an opportunity to give back to the community and they still looking for volunteers, if you'd like to sign up and be a part of that initiative. And then as well as on Saturday, we will have a food drive November um this Saturday at nine A M. for District One at Forest Hill. Thank you, Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned.